Attention, salute. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic where we stand on the edge of... In a moment of silence, please. Thank you for your motion. Welcome to our annual meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens their top public comment in part of our action items on the agenda. We have speakers on the phone themselves and their home district. We also ask for comments related to the three minutes ordered by everyone's speakers. The chair meetings useful in length. If you have more information, it can be submitted to the three minutes, please. Please provide a note on materials for the board review. Moderator will ask. Please report as time is last. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school or member, school administrator. That would be secure. Thank you for coming. We have a change to the agenda this evening. If you look at item four dot one, our high school resume. Mr. Stewart has been pulled away and will not be able to present. I swear to strike item four dot one. Correct. So with that modification, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Adopt the agenda.
You have a motion, Mr. Broke, is your second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hooten, all in favor of that?
Aye.
I have votes, no? It's ordered. Special recognition. Dr. Grimsley, you have this one.
Sure. Okay, so every year, V S B A puts on a student art contest. And we do put that out to the art teachers to select some of the excellent pieces of artwork up to that point in the year. Just to be selected by your art teacher is quite an honor. So we've invited all of the students whose art was selected to participate our year. And then there's a local and regional winner that goes on to compete at the V S B A level, which is a lot of schools in the state. So that's a lot tougher. And we didn't place at that contest. But we do want to honor our local and regional winners. So that's what we're going to do here tomorrow.
We should go regional.
Yeah. Start here. We can start with a skinny face. She can't be here tonight. This is for Rose Grimsley. My top.
Our mother.
I'll take it home. Elsie Matthews, if you'd like to come up.
It does.
All right, so our winner is the elementary category winner is Barrett Gates. Nice job. Beautiful art. That's amazing.
Your winner.
Good job. All right, then our high school winner is not here. I know she's very busy in production for the parade. Is Lena Moore is our high school winner. And if you look at her cicada painting, it looks like it's about to come out of the cave. This is really brutal. So we're very, very proud of this lady. Get that.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Report from the student liaison. How do you? You may have to...
You're like Trevor Ratner.
See how close she may get into us from...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. My name is Hugh Barker. As you may notice, my co liaison, Majette, is not here tonight. She's not really able to make it. But to jump right in, this month, the S F A had their farmer's breakfast where they were able to give back to the farmers in the community through hospitality. Also, in the month of April, the profile of the graduate team. And Laurel Ridge Community College hosted a career expo at R C H S for juniors and seniors on April 4th. Sixteen businesses participated in an event and offered a variety of jobs and career opportunities to students. And to shift over to the realm of athletics, boys' basketball had Nolan Prince made it to second team all district. As well as girls' basketball, Savannah Loving had second team all district, as well as making to second team all region. Chloe Jenkins had second team all region. Brooke Atkins had second team all region. Summer Shakelfert had second team all districts, first team all region, and first team all state. On a roll. So R C tracked also with our senior Ryan Campbell. He broke a school record with a throw of 142 feet and one inch in the discus.
Wow. That's true.
To jump away from athletics, this past week, R C H S also had fifteen German exchange students. They visited the school and they shadowed Rappahannock students for a day. And it was a cultural experience where they could, you know, I've experienced, we can tell you all about it. The next would be, and last but not least, staying on the subject of Deutschland. I have the pleasure to inform you that I have officially been accepted as an exchange student to study abroad in Germany on a fully funded scholarship sponsored by the United States State Department. The program dates back to the 1980s and is jointly hosted by the U S Congress and German Bundestag.
Hey, so you, not that, not that, or your senior year will be for Germany?
Junior year, I don't think.
Your junior year.
I planned it that way in the hopes that I'd be able to graduate with all my peers here in Rappahannock. You know, ever since I moved here, I think it'd be a really great place for me to graduate. So I wanted to keep that. That's why I'm doing it in high school.
And where are the German being and where are the German year?
I might not find out until I'm there for like four weeks. So it'd be very, we'll find out.
So is it, is it, is it a destination school or?
I could be placed at any school. I could be placed in most likely a rural community. My kind of joke is probably like the German version of Rappahannock.
That's what we built.
There you go, swat.
So when you, when you, when you get back, you need to just, you need to plan to visit us and tell us about it.
So part of that is I will not be here next year for my liaison position. So Majette will be there to kind of take, take my role.
So quite for you.
Well, thank you very much.
You're gonna do it daily, right?
That's great. Thanks for sharing all that.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
So exciting.
We need his A D M.
Do we get credit for his A D M on?
All he has to do is log in every morning.
There we go. There might be a link.
Well, I, I, we're moving on to donations. And I have to tell you, I just spent five minutes probably signing quite a stack of donations from this community abroad. So are you gonna roll through it?
Um, well, I thought, I think I'm just gonna, we had close to fifty donations this month. And so most of them are for the senior week raffle prizes and the after prom party donations. And so I wanted to give you a total cash donations for the month is eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Isn't that great?
Thank you.
Amazing.
Yeah.
So that is amazing work.
Yeah.
Which we will gladly accept and promote. Thanks. All right, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as they're appearing document?
No.
Yep. Second.
Sorry.
Second, Mr. Hooten, is there any comment? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, please, no. It's ordered. Mr. Broke, have you had opportunity to read the bills?
I have. Everything looks to be in order, assuming we're about to seventy-five percent of the...
Seventy-five percent.
Yep.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Motion is bottom, is your second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Please, no. It's ordered. Dr. Grimsley, four point two.
Thank you very much. I am going to actually hand this off to Dr. Johnson to give you the special education annual plan.
Good evening, members of the board. May I hold that until it turns on? Shake from a green side. Hold it till it turns on. And send it to their...
Thanks. Imagine.
Good evening, members of the board. It seems like this one year comes around more frequently every year. They'll need to come and tell you a little bit about our special education program and present the annual plan to you. So just some quick data on our special education program. On the next slide, I've previously, we had one hundred and ten special education students that were identified for our December one count, which is the official count that gets submitted to the Department of Education every year, which was very close to what we had last year, one hundred and eleven. I was very pleased to see that number because since COVID rolled out over the last couple of years, we've been seeing great increase in more students. But that, that official number remained pretty steady for us. This year, we have had an increased number of referrals from our private schools. We had eight of those this year, which I think seven of those were found eligible for services. That number is kind of important to keep in mind because we have to, in our annual plan, set aside some funds. And those funds are set aside to serve private school students. So on years where we have low numbers of students, I think this year maybe more came in. The number five for our private school students, so our set aside amount is lower. That number will push us out a little bit on my next annual plan next year. On the upside, we have had a decreased number of homeschool students receiving special education services because they have decided to join us back in organic public schools. Right now, it looks like we have around one hundred and twenty-seven students identified for services, which seems pretty high for us. That number tends to fluctuate between the end of school year and the next school year. We have ten students with pending eligibility determination at this point. We had five at this point last year. So there hasn't been an uptick in the overall number of referrals. And I would say that that is due to the impacts of COVID. And then another of the notice that we have had a decreased number of school referrals for outplace settings, which require the use of C S A funding. So we have gone from six to three of those for this spring school year. We're pleased with that. As far as our accomplishments for this school year, once again, we did meet the expectations for the results driven accountability matrix, which includes things like if we need our indicator reports. We've also had increased care and development due to our Zoom options for our eligibility meetings, as well as our special education advisory committee meetings. We've continued to have expanded opportunities for remediation so that we have creative scheduling and additional staff to help support the needs of our special education students. And then I'm pleased to announce that our schools did meet the Virginia State target of seventy percent of students spending eighty percent or more of their time in a general education classroom throughout the school day. The, the target for this was seventy, the state average being sixty-seven point six oh. So we exceeded that benchmark. So we're really proud of that. We worked very hard to make sure our students are included to the utmost extent possible. And then we had zero students who dropped out of their special education. And even better news is there were zeros in the school about a period. So good news all the way around. Just a quick update on what our special education advisory committee did this year. We had a kickoff meeting in September that was very well attended at the park at Rappahannock. We had our school social worker do a presentation that evening. On November the seventeenth, we met from four to five and we presented to our parents and our staff on helping students on how to regulate their feelings and introduce a new curriculum called the Zone of Regulation, which has been very helpful this year in working with our students who have had social emotional issues. In January, we had a presentation by the Disability Resource Center. And then we also had a presentation from the leader of a new autism support group. And that is even led by Tanya Cox, who's not only a staff member at our high school, but also the parent of a student with disability. So we're extremely excited for this new opportunity for our parents. While our advisory committee meetings aren't always that well attended, the autism group has had a steady group of, I think, nine people who have been coming to me every couple of weeks. And they have received support, not only in kind of navigating some of the problems in their childhood needs they reach to adulthood, but they're able to provide support for each other and lend, you know, a helping hand to support other people. So we're extremely happy with that. And then our last meeting was last week. We gave an update on some of our opportunities. And then as required, that, in that meeting, we did have approval for the annual plan that seemed presented to you this evening. So that annual plan was uploaded in your documents. There were no major changes to that this year. The funding remains around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't expect that to change since our December one number was very close to what it was last year. And then finally, we do have proposed member for our, proposed membership for our advisory committee for next year. Our policy says that this school year will approve that membership. So Mrs. Cantley has agreed to remain our chair. Her, in this meeting, is going to graduate this year, but we're glad that she wants to remain with us. Kelly Boggs is going to remain. And we have Tanya Cox, who's going to join us this year and hopefully blend our groups together. Miranda Hope will continue. And then Kristin DeLalo will be our teacher rep. And then Captain Sarah Rosenau will continue to serve as consultants. So thank you for the opportunity. And then I just want to remind you that this is autism awareness one. And we have an autism appreciation walk that is planned for April the twenty-second. It will be at our high school track from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock. And we are planning to walk the track, a one mile walk around the track. There will be snacks, face painting, cookie decorating, mural painting, and corn falling. So if you have time on April twenty-seventh, feel free to join us. Are there any questions?
Thanks for coming, Patty Young. An extensive plan.
All right, moving to our next federal program, very similar format. Career and tech annual plan is here for you. Mr. Tucker and Mr. Stewart work on this plan with a team designed to look at career and tech options. So that is loaded for you. Very similar format to the specialized annual plan, title one, title two. Most of them have a very similar format and not many changes for our lobbying thirteen thousand dollars. And stuff to support. And usually what this does is provide equipment funding. They fortunate with their equipment in the different C T E departments, career and tech. And each year on a rotating schedule, that department gets to purchase a large piece of equipment or more expensive than their regular supply money can handle. So I know this year the culinary was up and they were looking to purchase a new exhaust system, fan and something. My real, but...
I imagine that wouldn't go very far.
It doesn't go very far. But it's worthwhile to look at the A P R, that's their annual performance ratings for different areas. It's a little bit tougher for us with our size, especially with non-traditional enrollment incompleters. So for that, that would be your females in culinary or female students in welding classes, for instance, non-traditional career pathways in that area. We fluctuate. Some years we'll be up very, very high, some years just, but three kids in the class can change that whole dynamic worse. But overall, good and a lot of expansion in our career and tech options, especially work-based learning opportunities and certifications. So that plan is there for your approval as well.
Any questions for us, Mr. Hooten?
All right. Thank you so much. The next item, four point four, just a quick well check. It is springtime, so we're seeing those allergies kick in. We're seeing norovirus, a little bit of an uptick in norovirus. So I know our school nurse did send out some information about just doing some extra kid washing and those things to keep that virus at bay. We did some more deep cleaning in areas that we knew that had experienced some of that. But overall, your typical spring virus is still...
Where are we with our virtual world health?
Oh, we're, oh, the wellness clinic is still in transition with our heat care with Valley Health. They did have another turnover of a coordinator person on their end, which is pushing us off a little bit further, but nothing that we can do. We're all set. We have our system synchronized. The doctor who is going to be overseeing everything came and visited, loves the, loves the setup, not waiting to get started. It's just some of those, you know, bureaucratic pieces that you have to have in place to work. So we're getting those as quickly as we can. But at this point, we've given them everything we can do.
I guess I have one question that's sort of a maybe a tangent, but it's about our alert system. I understood that there was an alert that was sent out that didn't get to everybody. And that's sort of about the wellness of our school, but to me, it's not...
Yes, no, good point. So the well, Swift Reach is our software we use for emergency alerts. And for that reason, when you're dealing with some, or even a non-emergency, but when you're dealing with a situation and you want to communicate very quickly, this is designed to get a message very fast to everybody in multiple modalities. Apparently in Swift Reach side, what the technology department has told me, there's some updating that didn't, they didn't let us know to update our server on our end, meaning tech that does our network. So what that did was, I guess, took out half or so of the recipients that we're supposed to get. And on our end, it looks like it sent it successfully, but on their receiving servers. And I know I'm probably explaining it wrong on how networking and that works. But basically, whatever the communication went out on our end to wherever it goes to, and then that part had an update and kicked back, but not kicked back to us. So we didn't know that it hadn't hit until parents were calling us and saying, my friend got this message, I didn't get it. I didn't get it for my own kids either. There's something, something is wrong. So yes, has been fixed, has been tested, but from now on, we're not relying only on Swift Reach anymore. So I know how to, I have a plan in place to make sure that we'll use social media, email, text, and Swift Reach. And a call, whatever way you can use. The problem is when you're dealing with somebody, you can't always do all those things right away. So Swift Reach was designed to get a quick message out to everybody.
And just is there a way to do, have an internal test of those systems every, you know, monthly or every couple of weeks?
Yes.
Ready to...
That's a part of the plan, exactly.
So we're, we're gonna make sure with other...
Exactly.
Is there a way to get us on that?
Yes. We can put you on us.
Yes, that's great.
Yeah. Board members have to do. And usually, I think the way they're selected is in certain groups. So this one was designed immediately for elementary, you know, so we got the word out to everybody else because that was... And of course, all these decisions for the ten minutes of dismissal. Always. So a lot of decisions have to be made really quickly. But all in all, what I, well, takeaway, the alert system, yes, awful of that. Really, if we had better communication parents, although the parents, I have to say, have been amazing. They have been absolutely amazing, which, you know, I didn't expect. That was pretty serious, this communication. And they have been very kind in letting us know that, okay, well, here's an idea. They're giving us some good ideas for communication and just being part of the solution. That's why I love this. But so that's been great. But the takeaway is that in ninety seconds, this whole school was secure. All of the kids were in the classroom, safe, locked away. Teachers were, and teachers were aware what was going on. And the sheriff's department within two minutes was scouting the area and had a great presence there. So for me, as a parent and as a superintendent, I'm very, very pleased with how that went.
It's good that it was just a test. Yeah. We know it.
Absolutely. It was a lesson to just scout, be nice. But yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Bunn, any order, person?
Yes, I have, I did not anticipate with the generally, but I can add with the first item on the report, which is Headwaters has brought fifteen German high school exchange students to Rappahannock. They're starting here on April first, and I think they leave in two weeks, so they're, they're fifteen, fourteen. They, for one day, they shadow same age peers at my school. And they learn about our schools and our education system. They completed several community service projects while they're here. And they've also gotten to site in the county. I think they also went to D C and forint and, yeah, to just college. But they came to water pen farm too, if they were grateful for the flowers that was brought. So it's, it seems, and the point of a program like this is to hopefully motivate other students of ours to have that experience and take that on. There are those two week experiences that students can have as well as just as well the whole year. Be a really life-standing experience. The Headwaters Wrap Writing Internship is expecting, is accepting applications for the next set of writing interns for the next school year. It's open to students, grades nine to twelve, who enjoy writing. And the applications there do make very worth. Headwaters also awarded an educational internship grant to the third grade team. And they took their students to the Virginia, the Northern Virginia four year center in Front Row. I believe, in Front Row, yes. And students participate in kinds of environmental education activities that are also, as well aligned at the outdoors during that time and indoors too. It's really interesting. Headwaters also is moving forward with the development of their strategic plan, which will hopefully be in place by July first of this year. And the school did send out with success a survey and they've received over two hundred responses so far. Survey is ongoing still. And if you want to contact the school or contact the Generali Director at headwatersfoundation.org. director at headwatersfoundation.org, there's a link to complete the survey. It's a short survey and it's for students or graduates or parents or any stakeholders, anybody who is up there going into Headwaters, you know, so it's a pretty wide cast of candidates. That's the latest from Headwaters, good night.
I was wondering, I was wondering how this fifteen students journeyed out. So it's been done, all facility with that.
Yeah.
Well, it was a combination of Headwaters.
Youth brothers and sisters. Youth brothers and sisters.
Youth brothers and sisters.
Youth brothers and sisters.
And shout out to the foster partners that helped them actually.
That's good. Range rotation.
We had a big victory for them that really, a lot of fun, a lot of fun kids.
I got to drive them around in the back of our red pickup truck on the farm, maybe you love that. It's an all-American experience. We would go on the road. That's lovely.
It's hard to tell what story going on with, probably talking.
Yeah.
We're swimming in the pond, moving through the water, stop.
Name of, Mr. Grove, M D G S?
We did not leave, but we, uh, we did our five year Southern Association, Southern Association of College Schools. Valuation process.
How did you do? Oh, you got, I was using any office.
I'm curious.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, item six point one is the policy updates, we've got opportunity to view the best one and, uh, we'll be voting on it tonight. Any comments about this?
Same law, same law.
Same old same. Johnson, do it. Okay, moving on to public comment, if there's someone for the public, like, across the board this evening, if you would like to come up. Is it your name and is your appearance or not?
Right.
We can't. So I was reading to a community partner when we got the shelter in place. Um, I have nothing but good things to say about the response. We were cleaning the place and walking and, um, wherever the working on the teams and we're going to listen in no time and really there's a number of communication. What's in front of the kids you're seeing?
That's, face for zero. It's been a great. Thank you, stuff. Is there anyone else's issue? All right, moving on, is there a motion to approve the spending plan? Superbowl, Mr. Grove, your second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve C T E plan as presented this evening?
Aye.
Question is, is there a second? Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, goes up. Is there a motion to approve the B S P February twenty twenty-three policy updates? But Mr. Myers, your second, second, Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Goes up. Is there any business? Is there any requests for the future ten items this evening?
I'm going to have to mount my shoulder and.
It's all right, thank you, we have a.
Not yet, but we've, um, we already have gone out and Rob has actually reached out to others as well just to try and get more information. We've only received one so far. But different, like you had mentioned before, different scenarios. So here's an educational piece, here's an energy saving, here's Mayor Maresco, here's, you know, kind of those different types of processes too. So she'll present that, we're hoping this, um, not this one, but this is kind of.
So, so when we do proceed, it'll be a breadth of options as far as.
Complex.
Yeah. All right, our next regular scheduled board meeting is May the, I think, May the nineteenth, uh, at the high school. And the budget hearing, Board of Supervisors Public Hearing on the budget is in this room next Monday, seventeen. It's coming Monday, seventeen. And so far, things look very promising to me. They, uh, they have stepped up to the plate based on our request and, uh, so if you, uh, want to support such a thing, it's good to come out of them. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I do. It was moved, important, convene a closed session to allow members to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified coaching positions and discussion of assessment evaluation for students in the community. Cover two point two, that's ratio one one eight one.
You have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second is final, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye goes up. So we're going to go into closed session. We're recess long enough to say good evening in case our plan is sticking around. Uh, and, uh, and when we come out of closed session, we will, uh, have a motion regarding personnel work. And, uh, we'll adjourn. We're going to be in there how long, do you think? Could be a half hour maybe? Half hour almost, if you care to wait.